Alright.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberate and just.
Motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda.
I'd like to make addition to new business number nine. To add, slow my bank. City Hall.
Security?
Security door lock. I gotta find it. We might have it in your stuff. City Hall security.
Not new motion?
Yeah, I made the motion to add City Hall security to the new business. I'll second.
All due to any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
On the open forum. Oh, motion to approve consent agenda.
Sorry.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Alright, open forum, any person wishing to speak, they have two minutes for comments. Alright, moving to old business. Electrical rate increase clarification. So it's not just, last time we approved it, we said six percent, six percent, but that is not. She recommended like six percent on some stuff, but then raising a flat rate, rate on some other stuff. So we need to clarify that we're raising it the exact same way she has it written, instead of a six percent and six percent, because like.
The first year was six percent, the sixth year, the second year, it was more than six percent. Cause we were doing step one, six percent, year two, six percent. And when we did math, her rates are actually higher than six percent.
Oh, were they?
And so, we're like, we need to get up to her recommended amount, which would be higher. So we were thinking, you do the first year, six percent, the second year, match the rates that she recommends. Is that what we came up with?
Well, I think, I think we just do exactly.
You're talking about study.
How she has it?
Yeah, because like Lynn can look through this and understand it way better than I can.
Right.
So, then I'm trying to find the.
What page is that?
I think is it page four?
Twenty-three in the pamphlet. Is where some of it starts.
Twenty-eight is the rates.
But it's like, the, some of the flat rate stuff is going up one year, but then the rate increase is the next year, it's not.
It's not the same. The commercial rates are different to me.
Yeah.
Oh, that'll be just whatever she recommended, I thought that's what I made a motion to approve.
Yeah, I thought that's how we motioned it.
We motioned.
Whatever she suggested, I thought that's my motion.
After it was done, I said, so am I getting this right? Six percent for first year, six percent for second year, and I thought she said yes, and that's, I hope we will. Cause then after Lynn got looking through it, she's like, that's not quite right. So I'm like, alright, we need to bring it back.
Okay.
And clarify.
So what are you looking at, the step two, like it says here, four point?
Whatever we're still looking at. Yeah, I mean, that's what we ran till I thought. I guess that's what I made a motion to approve, was whatever she suggested in her current, in her steps.
No, we did the percentage.
I think, I think when we said it.
That was?
I think we said it all along, six percent and six percent. So we need to clarify that we follow her exact recommendations that are like.
Gotcha.
I guess that's all in the packet.
Yeah, there's one flat rate increase.
Yeah, here, the first step is to increase six percent, keeping the same energy rate you're on, and taking a second step to increase another six percent the following year. But that doesn't add to what her rate. But she.
Cause we're, I'm looking at her sheet down, yeah, page, well, page fifteen for packet, page twenty-four.
But, so on like page eighteen, if you look at the very bottom, it's current monthly facility charge is twelve twenty-six, next year's is twelve twenty-six, and then the second year is fourteen dollars, like rate. So that's only a one.
Well, you're looking at dump dual field, I think.
Yeah.
Other than the ones above where we gotta let her curse herself.
Yeah.
Alright, well, I guess, I guess that's what we did, I guess I'll make a motion to follow her steps.
Any discussion on that?
Her suggested.
Her suggest, yeah.
Yes.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
I saw that I was gonna ask you over. I got messed up.
Uh, moving on to Houston County Sheriff's, I think. I think we wait on that, we just kind of, we're talking to s- to county and seeing what more we can kind of work with on them. So it's in the budget till December, so we just leave it there until we maybe have a different plan or some kind of a plan. I think just, right now, we don't have to say yes or no to anything, we just table it forward further times. Do I have a motion?
Um, I got a question about that, is that okay with Swidberg? Cause I thought he had to have numbers by the thirtieth, is he okay with that?
Nope, he's fine with leaving it.
Okay.
He's, exact birth, we have till December to make a final, just like the county does, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to table it, till further discussion. Whatever the case may be, till we come up with something.
Yeah.
So what did, oh, she seconded it. So I guess I just, he's okay with once he had his budget in, like.
Well, he's leaving his budget what it is right now. He is, so.
Can I add a joke? Yeah, this, this comes to you. I'm Eric Johnson, County Commissioner.
Okay.
Or Chair.
Yeah.
He needs to have these numbers by the end of the month here, for our twenty twenty-six budget.
That's what I thought, cause that was the last.
I, I talked to him yesterday and today, and he's.
Did he leave him that number?
He wants us to.
I mean, you're, you're, you're good until the end of the year.
Yeah.
That, that's as far as your contract goes, the end of the year, but your twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight budget. I mean, that's the contract years, right? Three years? So we need to know that. To set our budget, because that.
Whatever you hear, it'll affect your budget there. What you're saying, right? I mean, if we keep it the same, no matter what we do, it's gonna affect your budget in the bottom line, too.
Well, I mean. The contract pays for the two officers that we hired to service your contract. And so we would like to know, before the end of the year, if that's not gonna happen, then we have to plan what we're gonna do there.
Right.
Right, cause your budget and our budget are two different dates of one day.
Well, we set preliminary levy here, the, the last meeting of the month here, so.
So we gotta set our preliminary budget here tonight.
So does, does he have his?
So if you're setting your preliminary budget for twenty twenty-six?
Yeah.
Won't you have to have that number for?
Yeah, we got it.
We do have the number, right now, in the budget, it is, we have.
It's in there.
It's in there for two deputies.
Okay.
So, that's where it's set.
Okay.
It's in there.
Okay.
But the only thing they, they're debating is if it's gonna drop down. But that's where I thought.
That's what affects them too, on the other side. So Brian needs to know whatever we decide to do.
But if he just told him, cause Brian told me that it's at zero percent right now, his budget.
Because it's not a loss, cause they, we're covering the two deputies. So, I.
But if we, we no longer have, if you guys no longer wanna do the contract, then we have to do something. I mean, we have two deputies.
Whether they're gonna absorb a deputy or take the thing out of.
And we got the, we got the vehicles and all that, squad cars.
I was told by Brian that we have time still, so, that's.
Yeah, but I think we just keep kicking this can down the road, we gotta make a decision what we're gonna do.
I think we're making an emotional decision, seeing how this conversation started three weeks ago, really.
Oh, can you share what you guys learned?
I would rather not.
I want you to, I want, let's get this over with, Brian, I'm tired of kicking this can. We've been talking about this budget since July. Let's talk about.
We didn't really give a yes or no on. We didn't give a yes or no, we got, we said that we can throw a number out, and he can take it to the county and see what their idea is.
I thought he was supposed to do that before, when we told him he was, cause we give him a number before, what we were thinking. And he says, well, all I can do is go and take it back and see what they say, so I thought that should have been done already.
But that option was taken away.
The only number we've seen is the three-year contract and proposal number that he's giving you.
Same thing we've seen then.
Yeah.
So you didn't see a number today in any meeting that you had? Was there talk of any meeting, of any number?
He, 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 we sat down and talked, I wish he was here. We sat down, he talked about. He didn't know where you guys were at, so, he, you know. He was wondering about, okay, they're talking about maybe not only doing one, or, or, or part-time, or whatever, and, you know, that's kind of hard to run a contracted service. And, and he also brought up where, about if the county would help subsidize somewhat of your law enforcement.
We, we've never asked for that, we have never, that has not been.
Well, that's good to know, because you can't do that, because we get in trouble with every other city in the county if you do that.
Nope, I, we've talked that we want to pay for the hours, that we have a deputy in town, and the amount of hours that you guys can do, that we're talking to him about. It's, I've never, no meeting, and I completely understand the commissioners, you will, you can't subsidize our law enforcement. That's not an option for you guys. You've gotta, you've gotta take care of the whole county.
Well, we basically told him today, it's, it's either the contract that was proposed, or it's nothing.
So it's all or nothing?
All or nothing, yeah.
And that's what I've been telling you guys the whole time.
Yeah, well, it was, Commissioner Johnson and I had a discussion, and they're still sticking with that. No, it was a couple weeks ago, I think you and I had a conversation.
Yeah.
And that's, that's where I was left at, that's what I was told, but then these guys had a meeting with Brian Swidberg, cause they thought maybe there was another option in there, and I'm like, that's not what I've been told.
Well, if it boils down to that, it's a pretty simple decision, I think. And you talk about getting it done, you can get it done, let's get it done tonight, then. Enough yee-hawing around, if, if we don't have no room for play, or anything, and that's, you're backing us up against a wall, whatever the case may be, it's all or nothing.
Well, I think it's just one.
That's what it is.
It's, yeah, it's the contract or.
Yep. So that's, that's the county commissioner's final say, is contract or no contract?
Full contract or no contract?
And that's where these guys, I think, were meeting, cause we want something in our city, and we were kind of led to leave, bring it to the commissioners, though they'll maybe accept it.
We were trying to.
That's what these guys were in the impression, I, I've been told twice.
That's what I was under the impression, that I was.
We were definitely given, like.
I think it was three of you trying to say to them, I'm misled.
Yeah.
He was, he was giving you other options?
Yeah.
See?
He said.
That he said he had to bring to you.
Yeah. Like he's, like that was. The proposed was just, like, we have a set number, dollar amount, and then your deputies that are in the county, when they come, if they're bored in the county, they can come to Spring. Not the best word for you, but if they're coming to Spring Grove, and they come and hang out for two hours, we pay you by the hour what that deputy costs.
How does that work, though? I mean, so.
Cause at that point, you, if you have a deputy, you gotta pay for hanging out with Preston, for the whole.
Well, yeah, I know, you guys have.
We're choosing to pay for it.
You have ordinances that.
It would be no ordinance enforcement. It could be any deputy. And when I ran the numbers, I ran one of your highest paid deputies, so on your lower numbers, on your lower numbers, you'd actually be making money out of this.
Well, we, we're, we're not in the business of making money out of it. Our contract just covers your two, your two officers for their service to provide police.
Yeah.
Protection for your service.
And we were just trying to get the number a little lower, so that we could afford it and still have some kind of a police presence predictable.
How much was your budget before, when, when Paul was here, for law enforcement?
I asked Aaron, I, uh, this was back to twenty twenty-one, this was Paul, it'd been the last time. Let's see, Sonny said that before she was mayor. I think it was three hundred and sixty thousand, that was three-fold, Paul and two-fold time officers.
Plus we got twenty-five thousand from the state.
We had some LGA money.
And he usually came.
You don't get that.
Not anymore.
Cause we, cause you don't provide it, so.
Right.
And then we, he also usually came in twenty-five thousand dollars under budget.
Yeah, but he always came in, and that was his one breaking point for the whole year, he was over that.
Well, that was back in twenty twenty-one.
Yeah.
And we don't know what happened with inflation since then.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I know.
And we're not, we're not saying that, that, the big thing is our streets need repair, and that's where we're putting, trying to put money into that, it's not that the sheriff's department is one hundred percent of our increase by any means.
Well, technically, I think some people have been led astray on that. John Sullen was asking for an additional hundred fifty thousand, but that's not in our budget currently, so it's not bumped up currently. So we can't include that, cause everybody's like, oh, it's because of John. I'm like, no, it's not it.
We have an old budget here, we can look at, what is the percent increase in it, from the last year here versus the next two years? There you go, on this page.
What's your question?
What is the actual percentage increase in twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six going forward? What is, is that percentage?
I wanna say from just, I.
You know what I mean, I'm looking at, okay, what are we, what are we paying county right now, for the way you need, and the services provided?
Three hundred and fifty-eight thousand.
Okay, and it's going to what for this next year?
Three hundred and ninety-seven, yeah.
Yeah, we had that number somewhere.
It's probably in an old packet.
What was this last year?
This last year was like three fifty-eight and some change, right?
I don't know, I got here at four oh two, was your budget for twenty-five.
If you go into your last one's packet, or this particular meeting, is that it? Are you at it?
I don't know.
Twenty twenty-three was three twenty-three eight twelve, twenty twenty-four was three hundred and three eighty-eight six, and twenty twenty-five was three hundred and five ninety-eight.
Yeah, for the twenty, for, for twenty-six.
For three, four, five, or forty?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Three eighty-fourth one?
Well, I signed the checks, I know the check is.
Twenty twenty-five was three ninety-four five ninety-eight.
Five, three, four.
Yeah. Twenty-four was three thirty-four.
Yeah, okay, what's for next year?
Twenty-six is three ninety-six six seventy-two.
Still nine percent. From this year to next year.
What was that?
Be nine percent. But that covers wage increase, insurance increase.
Wage increase is the biggest part. And insurers.
I mean, uh.
And insurers, yeah.
Twenty-seven and twenty-eight, we go up to four twenty-one, and almost four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but it's twenty-eight.
Well, I think that's, yeah, that's what they're asking for, but it all depends on how much. He's also putting in there, possibly insurance is going up. They already know what wages are gonna be, doesn't matter what's insurance, how far they're gonna go.
I'd like to leave it where it is, but if that's not, I think, there's five people here, not my choice.
I mean.
And that's not an option because of, you gotta know, or, I mean, there's no change in, nothing.
You took that little poll, do the commissioner know what the results? Does that work?
Since they sent a letter out, maybe.
Well, they might as well give the results anyway, so people are gonna wanna know what it was.
No?
And keep.
Numbers you throw.
Is that just the Facebook one?
Oh, you have to put on this.
I got it in your bill, too. Or did I?
You didn't pick a bill yet, have you?
No, I haven't.
So.
It's in a pile.
You haven't opened it yet.
I haven't.
So the vote came back, keep the contract as it is, we had nine. Um, decrease to one officer, seventy-four, cancel the contract, seventy-seven. We had a hundred and sixty votes, so that's about twenty.
Did say twenty-four percent.
Twenty-four percent.
Something like that.
Every city devoted. They're all right here.
I feel if you took that times three, if more, and you had seventy-five percent, the results would be the same.
Still gonna be about fifty-five.
Yeah, twenty percent's a good standard, that you should, if you get that, it's pretty good.
Yeah.
And that's all we ever get for regular turnout on election day.
Yeah. I know, surveys. So, so it was one or none, is that what the top two?
But, two or none.
Two, yeah. Well, when we sent the letter out, they thought there might be the in-between, where it went on to one officer.
That was our option given to us then, but.
Right, after that, it went to all or none.
That hadn't gone to you guys yet either.
We discussed it today, and it was, we all agreed it was either.
All or nothing?
All or nothing, yeah, two, two, two officer contract, or.
Well.
And I, why, I.
Why?
Yeah.
Well, because we have two officers that we hired to defer the contract, so, I mean, if we reduce it down to one, that means we gotta do something there, I mean. We had, we had two more deputies to serve the contract.
Yeah, right.
They also.
So you're saying what, in your opinion, you'd rather fire two people than fire one?
That's not what you.
That's not what I said, I said, if, if.
You're, you're talking about hiring them for us.
They had to, they had to.
Which we had to, to service the contract.
Yes, but now you're telling us that essentially, you'll have to eliminate them too. So now you're telling us that you would rather, we still want a deputy or something like that? You're telling me that you would rather get rid of two deputies instead of get rid of one deputy? Is that, that, well then, how would you say it?
Yeah, that's, like I said, that's how it kind of feels like we're backed up against a wall, but either this or that, you know? And you're saying.
I mean.
There's no.
That's a part of a lot of the conversations here.
You know, it's like saying, okay, we'll hire, give you these two guys, but there is no way that you can let one of them go. You're hiring these two guys, and that's the way it is, or it's not, you know? There's no adjusting, no nothing, that's what I get out of this whole thing. It's almost like there was a little hidden thing with it when you hired them two guys for it. Oh, did you read the fine print?
Oh, you're not.
There was nothing hidden.
No, there is nothing hidden.
Well, no, but I mean, I don't know, that's.
I will go, there might have been something that they said at one time, that maybe didn't make it to the meeting here, when we did the contract.
Yeah, that was all behind, none of us were involved.
None of us were involved in any of that, so what could happen is they could have said something, and it just didn't get, it got spelled out on that side over there, but never got passed a couple people, and got delivered down here.
Right.
Before our time.
Pre-Jana, too.
Yeah, so I'm saying.
Cause what?
Pre-Jana.
She wasn't here.
I was here the very end, so we brought it back to the county, and we amended it, and I signed, I signed the amendment.
We're the same.
The final copy.
Yeah, cause that's right when you started, everything I didn't portray, that's before that.
But I don't know numbers or anything, but a lot of times in contracts, if you go to one, it doesn't mean it's half, because there's a lot of usually administrative costs in that, so.
Cause we broke it down, we had the numbers.
Yeah, I know, but there's a lot, usually a lot more cost in that, so when you're thinking, let's go to one and save half, that, that, I don't know, I haven't booked it, not that.
We had the exact numbers from Swidberg, and we had to keep the administrative costs and some other thing that was in there. There's only two things that weren't cut in half, that they had to keep.
I think it was all we had to have, the vehicle.
The administrators, the vehicles and everything, we went off, like we, what I proposed, we kept the administrator at half administrator, and then we kept, we just went pretty much half of the hours for the deputies, and with no set schedule on when to be here, because that's the biggest thing that we have, is we want kind of more of a random patrol, because every kid in this town knows that the deputy comes on at eleven, and when they leave. So that was kind of the, like, we're not, we're not trying to like, and if there's a nine oh one call, the deputy can leave. Like, he's not, like, they don't have to, like, leave Spring Grove, like, they don't have to stay here, and you don't have to fill it again.
You read the contract?
No, what I proposed to Swidberg, what I proposed, like, we don't need a hard set number, but.
How do you, yeah, how do you do that, how do you have a contract with a hard set number?
I do it every day, I do township work, they have a budget, and when there's something to do, I go in there and do it. I don't, like, just sit on a gravel road, cause, and bill them. I don't care, make it, somebody make a motion. I was completely misled in all of this, so, yeah.
We already have a motion in a second.
To what?
To.
To table it.
But I thought that's where this all started, that he needs to know.
I know, so you gotta do something.
So first we gotta.
You gotta do something.
Very subject. We gotta either.
I'm not able to. I'm still able to table it, but that's.
Alright, I'm gonna name a table.
You're for tableing it?
Nope.
Oh, no, I just wanna make a decision to myself.
That's.
Who made a motion to table it?
He made, or, Mike?
I'll second it.
Mike made a motion to table it, Morgan seconded it, but now after discussion.
I think Mike is almost rescinding his motion.
Yes. Because he, he come up with it, he needs to know, so, and then you made the comment, let's get it.
I make a motion to table it.
Well, you already have that motion, you need to vote on the motion.
We rescinded it.
Well, I rescinded.
Just finish, well, because you are now on a second.
So now we have a motion from Eric to table it. Does that have a second? Send your motion. Does it have a second?
I'd like, I'd like a second.
Well.
I'm gonna make a motion, in light of everything's been happening lately, not here, you know, here, everywhere else. I'm gonna make a motion, we keep contract as is. Move forward for the next three years. I'll second that.
Any discussion?
I'm just, I'm making that motion, cause with everything in the world going on right now, and the way people are starting to act, I'd rather have law enforcement presence in this town, like we've had it. A week ago, I would have voted to get rid of the contract.
I agree with you.
With everything happening right now, I wanna keep our law enforcement we have, here. If I've had this conversation tonight.
Yeah.
Let's see, real quick. Make a motion and second.
Any more discussion? All in favor of keeping the sheriff's department contract the way it's been proposed for the next three years, say aye.
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 All opposed, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say what?
Say aye or nay.
Nay.
I didn't vote for it and select didn't vote for it.
Morgan?
Morgan did.
All right. So actually carried.
Motion.
Yep, motion carried. All right, moving on to business, childcare. I don't know. It was an informative meeting and a lot of numbers and a lot of things to look at and. Mainly now just see if anybody's interested in doing something with it, so, I don't think there's really much to vote on. An update, yeah, just an update, I mean, every time, I've read the packet a couple times and it's. Every time you see something new, that's like, wow, that's crazy, but. Right now, I don't, we don't have, I don't think the city's gonna do it by themselves, so, we don't really have. And that's my opinion, like.
I remember part of the packet that you guys had sent that from that guy, I didn't have a lot of time to read through it.
Yeah.
Just whatever you told me about it and.
I got an email from somebody today saying, um, somebody's gonna be contacting me because somebody might be getting a grant or they can buy the building and these two. Daycare center, I'm just waiting for this person to call.
Yeah.
Whoever it is, so.
Somebody on, some, you said whatever type of.
I'd like to think it was somebody from across.
I know.
So, I mean, we're not out of options.
No, and there's.
There's still coming in.
There's three options in there, if you look at all three, you know, he recommended one, was his main, but he did the business plan, so all three would. Potentially turn a profit, it's just. Right now, I, I've always felt the city's not gonna do it, operate the daycare center by themselves, so we need to find. Some of the donors and see who is interested in helping with it, so. No motion, or do we, anything needed on that?
No.
Uh, moving on to CEDA contract.
Do you have to call Laura being to talk contract or not?
I talked to her earlier today, she just said that and all, let's discuss tonight, if we have any questions, we try to call her, but.
Okay. Well, I know, I'm gonna make a motion that you drop the letter to terminate contract with CEDA in October.
I'll second that.
Um, okay, give me one second, Aaron. Um, if that is the case, um.
Just a thirty days in writing.
Thirty days letters.
Yeah. Yep, I can do that, uh. They wanna know what, do you want them to do with, uh, current, uh.
Current back, current project should be turned over to you.
Okay.
And. The EDA.
And what do you want them to do for the last remaining of their time after stuff is turned over or if they're.
Try and wrap up the stuff they've been told to do that they haven't done.
Okay.
That one.
Right.
So is your administrator gonna become the EDA director then?
She's been doing more of it anyway than the CEDA people have anyway, so.
Which we used to have, that's what, we used to have the administrator.
We're gonna have to.
Our administrator does more than the CEDA person.
We've gotta figure out, like, if one person's gonna take this on, I'm gonna give a stipend or something, like, there's, there will be compensation for whoever. Does it, but it doesn't have to be bloated to the way it is, that it is right now.
I mean.
Right, Jana should, could do it as a minister, when you have, I mean, we used to have the administrator do it when we only had three people, two and a half people up there.
I mean, she's got to help her too.
Now you have three and a half, so maybe.
Yeah.
She's got definitely to help her too.
We just haven't sat down because they've still had the contract till the end of the year, so now that you guys are shortening it up, like, we're gonna have to. Figure it out a little quicker.
I'm gonna start my band-aid off.
They've done a lot for our town in the past and I not have.
In the past, yes, in the past, yes, I feel. But we gave them still, there's still EDA money there, they need to hire bigger projects for grant writers and stuff like that, you know? That they can still use to. You know.
So you de.
Bring a special list into.
Cause remember EDA is economic development for our town, which really promotes our town and brings money into our town, so you need to make sure you. Keep the EDA moving forward.
Well, that's what we did give, you know, it's in the budget, that was, and that in the chamber, to work together on that.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Right. Moving on to business. Swim's, or Swim Center Manager seasonal update.
Uh, she's not here. So.
Can I just ask one thing that, I don't know if it needs a motion, but can somebody, before the season starts, pick out a. Pick out a uniform or an approved. Uniform.
I agree with you.
Huh? I, I don't care who it is, but my phone, I have had more conversations about lifeguard swimsuits than I ever thought I ever wanted to have. And if we can just take care of that before they do.
I was a pretty high student.
I, I just, like, let's, let somebody else sit down and give them three options and that's it, like, I don't. I was told to go, have you seen it? No, it might, it, no, I don't, it's my niece, I don't know, no, I'm not going there. I'm not doing it, just take care of it, please, do we need a motion on that?
No, we can talk to her about that.
Okay.
We can do that.
Thank you.
Uh.
Oh. Right there, okay.
I did, um, I did talk with her and she was supposed to be here tonight, so I don't know why she's not, but I don't know if I'll see if she can come maybe next month. And put it back on the agenda.
All right.
All right, moving on to replacing phone system, call from Spring Grove Communication.
Uh, long story short, our phone system doesn't work great, my message button is on all the time, so I have to manually go check my phone. Every day, which I don't, cause I forget, um, to see if I have messages, so, we looked at new, new phone system and we just figured out that if we switch to the new phone system, we're actually saving about two hundred dollars more.
For which one, you got two options here.
Um, so, the two options. One out, do you have it up, Morgan?
Yep.
So the one has different, there are two different phone systems, basically you could program more numbers into one phone than the other. And which, I think. Yeah, I have nothing programmed into my phone and somebody, like, one of my coworkers has everybody programmed.
So what, uh, what system are you asking for?
Well.
A hundred and seventy-seven a month, or you have?
If it was up to me, I'd go with the cheaper one, which just means that somebody programming stuff into their phone. Like.
I mean, mostly the same package is just gonna, the thing, the biggest price would be the phone.
Yeah, yeah.
So you go, okay, with the cheap with the. Not to say they're a cheap phone, but they're.
Is that for all the phones though, or just?
Yes.
Okay, this is the whole works, all five, okay?
Yeah.
Two computers.
If you went with the bigger or the more expensive one, that just gives everybody in the office more options to program things with the phone, I mean, just because. I don't, doesn't mean that they would, so, I mean, that's up to you guys, what you want, people.
It's for the needs, I mean.
What we pay.
Does that make a motion to your order package?
That was, I'll second.
I was just curious, when, I'm sure, Mark's supposed to pull more options to get.
Yeah, that's basically what it came down to.
Okay, yeah, I'll make a motion about that T thirty-three contract.
Yeah. Any, uh, discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? All right, motion carries. Um, Minnesota Department.
Oh, back up one, number three.
Oh, wait. All requests from the school to shut down the one-way for, is that home tone?
Yep. Make a motion.
I'll make the motion.
As long as it's, you add in there, with the flexibility to change the date to another day if the weather requires it that way.
Yep.
We're running that.
When they needed that.
Well, they're gonna deal with law enforcement anyway to land a freight, so whatever happens, so.
Yep.
Um.
We're gonna schedule it.
Who made the motion?
To a class. Morgan.
But my, the date, the date might change. Just saying.
If it rains, or if it rains down, they might change it to a different date.
All in favor?
Who's the second?
I'll take the second.
Okay.
Aye.
Aye. Um, Minnesota, per, the Department of Commerce, solar and public, or public building grant programs cover seventy for essential. Solar costs for wastewater treatment plant.
So, I talked to Aaron, this isn't anything that has to go under our budget, this can come out of the water sewer fund, um. If we were to go with this grant, if we were to get it, um, we were looking at where the most expensive. Building or cost are for the city, and it's obviously the, the wastewater treatment plant, and, um. The city would have to pay about thirty-three thousand dollars, that'd be our cost to it, and Aaron said, if. You guys wanted me to apply for this, that's about the portion that the city would have to pay out of the water sewer fund to put the solar in.
We have a readily, readily available, a lot of the funds spent if we get it.
Mm-hmm.
Perfect, make a motion to apply for it.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Our twenty twenty-five block grant fire department for new gloves and new vests submitted by Jana. Good job.
Why isn't Andy Ray needs himself, I used to write it myself all the time.
I'll make a motion to.
I was just asking why Andy Ray's writing his own, I used to write my own.
Well, there's three more to talk about. Computer finance community compilation grant for emergency response equipment, steel chainsaw and rescue saw submitted by Jana. Good job.
I have one question, who did you write it with?
Um, the city and the cities around us, so.
Oh, you did?
So I did the same thing, I'll just say number seven, the same thing as number seven, the computer financial grant, steel chainsaw, fire rescue saw, I applied for both of them.
I thought you were in love this year.
Yeah, so I'm like, well, it's there, let's put them into the vote.
These are prime examples of why we don't need CEDA.
No, 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 this is different.
No, I used to write these myself.
Yeah, yeah.
So they can be writ, so they can be written in crayon apparently.
We always got them, it's only everything crayon you're saying.
I was gonna say it, no, this is not that, but I've always helped with the fire department stuff, so.
Yeah, and she has, so.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, zoning permit?
With a new of the ordinary.
Okay, uh, City Hall security, number nine.
Um, I did reach out, so I did talk with Brian earlier today that, um. You all know, the public doesn't know, that we have a lot that goes on at City Hall and we have a lot of safety issues and. With everything going on in the world and things going on in our own city, it's, things happening to our own mayor, um, I think it's time that we. Um, look at doing a policy for blocking City Hall door, doors when we have one employee working, uh, just for safety reasons only. We've had a lot of instances where one person has been working and things have happened at City Hall, and I think that we gotta stop waiting for something to actually happen and. Take action to keep our employees safe, so. I talked with Brian today and I just said I would like to, to ask you guys to approve and open. Our, our lock door policy that we can come up with, where if it's one staff working, City Hall's allowed to. Lock the doors so they're safe, and we could have a sign on the front door that says, we're open, but. Call us, or do the staff safety, call us, so, I mean, everybody's got a cell phone anymore. Most of the people that come to City Hall come to drop their bills off or pay their bill, you can always call in and pay your bill, we have drop boxes. If you need to, um, make arrangements to pick up a key for the pest building, if you're renting that. Um, we know you gotta come pick a key up, so when you get there, call us and we can come open the door and give you a key, but I think we just need to button up, I mean, you all see my. Security door in my office with a accordion door with a flip latch on it, I mean, that's.
They agree to the outside.
How often is there actually only one person in the office?
Why not? Like, just this afternoon, it was just me because, uh, one person went fishing, took the day off, and the other person had a soccer game, so. I mean, it could be a half hour, there's many times, somebody might be sick, somebody there you are, you don't know, and I would say.
I'll make a motion to allow City Hall to. To, um, lock their doors when their staff is down to one person.
Um, I wanted to add to that, like, the policy I was looking at says, um, when you're down to one, one employee. And or if you feel it's necessary due to things going on in the community, and if it could be locked permanently with all three of us there. Cause we have days where, we're all three there, but there may be an instance going on where for our safety, it might be better that it's locked.
Well, yeah, make a motion to use your own discretion as when you should lock the door for your safety and.
Then bring, that's be the motion, but then with.
I, I would.
Make a draw policy for the next one, this is the last, yeah, just kind of the last minute, but for the next month, you do whatever you feel for safety and then. Bring us a policy there.
If you wanna lock, lock remotely out, we understand.
He can get in.
I've actually gone and sat with them in City Hall when there's only been one person, and they know somebody that was coming.
Yeah.
I've been, just have a seat at the desk and I just sat there.
This happened a few times, where we've had to call, having to come in, so, um, I, I just decided, I'm like, you know what, enough is enough after everything that's been going on. Recently, I mean, us personally, um, it's, it's time, I'm not waiting for somebody to get hurt, so.
Do I have a second?
Yeah.
Any more discussion?
Doesn't matter, Morgan.
Motion to approve, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries. Budget, resolution twenty-five twenty-eight, approve proposed twenty twenty-six tax levy.
I'm making a provision, motion to approve resolution twenty-five dash thirty-eight, propose twenty-six tax levy.
How much is it going up?
Seven hundred thousand or nine hundred thousand.
That's not the final.
I believe it is.
This is proposed.
This is proposed.
We set the final on the sixteenth of December.
Oh, not final, no. What's the proposed?
Proposed is nine hundred thousand.
Nine hundred thousand, I think it was seven hundred thousand, it's gonna be nine hundred thousand right now.
We're gonna, it's, it's gotta come down somewhere, we just gotta figure out, John won't do any street projects for the next three years, I guess. That's where we're, that's where we're at with this. It's proposed, so, I guess, we've gotta have.
Is that with their contract in there too, is that, is that with their contract?
So. Yes, yep.
Yeah.
So.
And that contract is guaranteed.
You guys approved it, so, we gotta go through that, so now we gotta find, we gotta find other, other areas.
The fire hydrant that was across from a fatal house burning down last year will still be, killed down, with a bag over the last seven years, it'll still be.
So if we can't go back to that contract at all.
No, you guys approved it, and, and they.
We can always, I'll approve something.
And they, well, they need to put it in our budget and plan.
And we can always not approve it.
But I mean, like, later on, when we're still doing our budget, can we pull it later, like?
Pull this lead.
I, I, I don't even know what to say right now with the conversations I've heard in the last week, so.
The, the topic ones were the sheriff's contract.
Administration.
Me. CEDA. You cut CEDA, you kept them, there's only one left. We still need a second done, is that right?
We'll believe it, there where it is for now, but I mean.
Someone's got a genuine.
Yeah. I'll second it. Any discussion? All right, motion to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Alright. All opposed? Motion carries.
I'm frustrated, truly frustrated with the way this went. The numbers coming in way late, I mean, this needs to be started way early. Hard to make a decision on things when you don't have any numbers sitting for you.
I feel he's paying the same way as coming.
Very disgusting.
Come on, let's figure it out.
What are you for?
It's all, all we can do, just gotta figure it out.
Alright, setting date for truth and taxation meeting, December sixteenth.
Can I ask a question quick while it's in there about budget? Does that new budget then have CETA out of it, or are they still in that?
They're out.
So that's CETA out and it's still going up ten thousand dollars?
Yeah.
Holy shit, what's going up?
Yeah, and that's, everything's going up, everything, and we didn't even get John's street projects added in that we needed to get done next year.
I think John's getting two hundred thousand dollars more than he was last year, in the twenty twenty-five budget, he's got five hundred thousand, twenty.
I thought it was not, the budget was in there.
Or in twenty, in twenty, in twenty, yeah, it is, in twenty-six.
Not the one fifty.
Why not?
Because he couldn't get that, the only way he could get that is if the police budget went down, and that didn't go down, so he doesn't get that, so there's no, um.
He's getting two hundred thousand dollars more than he was this year, yeah.
But the one fifty wasn't ever budgeted, that's not even in there.
That wasn't the sixth speed.
I, I, that, cause I just told Trent today.
I had asked, I had asked a question today.
And I told him, and I said, no, you're.
That was here at the last budget meeting.
I said, you're wrong, and he goes, oh, I think I don't have this right, and I'm like, you don't, and I went back just to ask Erin to make sure that I heard it right.
I had questions, so I called her today and I was misconduct with things and intercepts and stuff, so. I'm sorry, I could, could, uh, public safety over streets.
I'm not saying you're wrong in that choice, I'm just saying I'm very upset with the conversations I've had for the last week that I'm finding out that maybe weren't the way I was.
You feel they're misled.
Not even an option in the beginning?
Yeah, like, it wasn't wasting my fun.
Well, you can never feel bad about putting people's public safety as a priority.
I don't, no, I think he's mad about what he put his poll.
Oh, it's the preparation on the other side of it.
No, I'm just saying that, so, I mean, feel good about going home tonight about that, but the flip side of that is, oh, we just gotta hear.
It's hard to feel good about something when you've got a lady crying in your office and.
I know, believe me, I know. Believe me, I know, I imagine all of these people crying in my office.
Yeah, yeah, you kinda like to give a poll out and these people wanted one thing, but here we turn around and go over the opposite of what the people wanted.
And you can't make that decision.
It's, can't make a likely. So, the list doesn't like it, just remember next June, the filing starts for July or August.
Well, it's like, why do you need to poll people if you didn't even take in their opinions? I mean, that, as a, as a person, I've been partaking in it, so I, it's not me, but it's like.
That, we tried to, but we just got told that we can't.
When you didn't have, they had different options.
Right, but I mean, they, the way that sound was, then you need to talk to the public, cause if their taxes are gonna go up that much,
Three options.
that, that's ridiculous, it's gonna be.
The poll had three options, the poll doesn't mean shit when you only got two.
I know, I know, so you probably shouldn't have done your poll.
Okay.
We were led to believe we had three options.
I'm, I'm getting, I'm, I'm getting a, a feeling there that this is all because of Houston County's contract, that your levy is this big.
Absolutely.
We led to be this far.
How can they, how can they be, how can that be?
No, not.
How can that be, because our con, our, our budget from last year was only.
I'm not, but we had different options and different routes we could've went.
So we left it.
And we left it open because we probably would've went with the middle budget.
With the sheriff.
But then when that disappeared, then, and it's not on the table, the, the poll didn't mean anything. What would they have said?
I mean, if us, if it was like an option, we'd have given the numbers for one officer.
Well, see, when I, when I saw this poll and all them options down there.
Right, and then that one officer was not on the table anymore, that we learned tonight.
I've always known that.
I know, I know, I've known it, cause they're, we had a conversation.
I told you guys that.
The one officer's number was not.
I, so why were we given the one officer numbers?
That's what I mean, but when we find out they're not on the table.
Why, why was that option even become? How did that option even become? I think that's what we're saying, that we're misled.
I think.
We were told to throw out, we were able to throw out a number and it would, they, it was still an option, that's what we were told.
Throw out a number, what do you mean?
He said, don't, don't throw to like one deputy, two deputies, throw in a number of what you would like to spend on policing, and we can try and do that.
I never heard no, no such thing.
That was, that's what I, that's what we were told.
And that's why when I saw this poll, I thought, where are these options coming from, that have never presented to us?
And Svenberg was in that meeting with us when we discussed this poll, putting it together, he was part of it.
That probably tells me why he's not here today.
Cause.
Playing both sides or what?
But if the police is only going at what percent?
One percent per year.
One percent?
One point zero.
Nine percent, so.
No, no, nine percent was from the twenty twenty-one contract, that, that your, your budget was at, that was what you were figuring there.
Trained that shit.
Well, so I said a fair, if you're down. Three eighty-four, eight year, three eighty-six, nine year.
Where's the two hundred thousand coming, where, why is, why is that going up so much, where's that coming from? Is the budget public, can I get a copy of that sent to me? It should be, right?
I can't even calculate or work it, I'm honest with you. According to my numbers here, the twenty twenty-five budget for the sheriff contract for that year was four hundred and two thousand. The proposed budget number for twenty twenty-six is three hundred and ninety-seven thousand. So, in those figures, we actually trimmed it, he trimmed it the first year, so it isn't because of our contract numbers that your budget's going up two hundred thousand. I don't understand, we were scheduled, we were budgeting, we just haven't got that far yet. Yeah, so. Our contract has nothing to do with your huge numbers going up. Taking the.
Right, you're right.
Yeah.
But wouldn't option two be taken out of the, completely?
I think what they're mad about is the fact that we were told that we could have multiple options. I understand that, if that was the case, I, you know, I understand your frustration. You're great with us, I know you would be. But like I said, that was never relayed to us as an option, it was, he, he figured out the two, three-year contract for the two, like, we've always been doing, and that was it.
So he has to.
He did, he did relay that he was.
He was saying, always been good, cause we had one three-year contract and now we're at a breaking point because we have to sign another three years, and I think that's part of our question too, is why do we have to sign all three years at one time?
So, where's the two hundred thousand increase coming from then?
John's budget's going from three hundred thousand to five hundred thousand, because he wants to fix a lot of the streets up.
And we need more than that, because we can't bond for everything, and we have to start budgeting our street projects now, so, like, this could've happened last year, but it didn't. And so we're trying to do it this year, and now we can't do these projects, and our streets are terrible.
Why not?
Terrible, and we're so far behind. Yeah.
Every year, you know.
It's just a culmination, I think, and seeing before you and I back on that, we've always tried to keep it low, and we have, we've been too low, maybe.
Every year when you don't go up, keep up with inflation, you.
Which we haven't.
We went backward two percent one year, two years ago.
That's the thing, they raised, well, they raised all, we raised everything else.
Yeah.
We raised electric and utilities a lot that year, because they had never raised it for, it, long, too long, so we.
Yeah, we did that.
Couldn't double whammy them, so we had to do, that's why we kinda kept, trimmed it that one year.
Well, we haven't until summer, we're gonna have to sit down and go through and. Actually, you know.
I'm, I'm gonna be six, December sixteenth. I already feel it. No, we're, it's not, we, we can't raise it that much, and I, I'm totally against raising, we gotta find another concept, I guess.
Yeah.
So it's, like, alright, am I missing a page?
Um, you gotta still set the date for December sixteenth.
On the margin for December sixteenth, six P M.
So moved.
Okay.
All approved?
Aye.
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 Aye. Alright, the motion carries. Is there a second page?
Backside, we'll get over it.
Oh, you got backside, you got it on one side.
We, we have everyone's special one.
Oh, you have bigger friend?
She draws smiley faces telling me why to smile.
City council. Call up proper stuff, huh?
Yeah. City Council regular meeting in September, yeah, whatever.
October.
This is, mine says September. Mine says.
October twenty-first at six P M.
Items brought up by Mayor Council for attorney for discussion and then the actual taking of this meeting for these topics.
You were reading the header, the header.
One minute. Next regular council meeting, is there, yeah, October, alright, October's twenty-first, six P M. Any meeting updates, anybody? Parties didn't happen, the EDA. EDA was being informed on the, the budget was, we said it, and, I was pretty much, I didn't have much else. Planning, we didn't have any.
No, they're waiting.
Library.
Library discussed for downtown building, and, um, just, so, right, so, things are out without, we're still in the back.
What's your turn?
All in favor?
Aye. How about you, yo, aye, your turn.
Jamie, alright, hold on.
Your turn? Aye.